Okay, it's a little after 5:30, so we're gonna go ahead and get started on the work session portion. First, I think we have a presentation by the University of Missouri Extension. You ready?
Good evening, and here we go. So, hello everyone, thank you all for attending tonight and having this session. Special thank you to John for arranging this for us. My name is Darlisa Dilts, and I am the Business Development Specialist at the University of Missouri Extension over in the St. Peters office. And my obligation today is to kinda introduce you to, well, not introduce you, because I'm sure you already know, but make you more aware of what we do in our Extension office, and just kinda bring you up to speed to some of the programming that we have been doing out of our office. So to start off, if you can see my title, it is defining what our brand is and what that means to you. And when I say "you," I mean the community as a whole. So what is our mission at the University of Missouri Extension? Our mission is to improve the lives, the communities, the economies by producing relevant, reliable, and responsive educational strategies that enhance access to the resources and research by the University of Missouri. So basically, what that means is, we are an avenue to the non-traditional set of resources for our community. We provide programming that is beneficial to our community by way of classes, forums, and all aspects of community involvement. What we value, again, you'll see those three words, we value relevance, reliability, and resourcefulness, because that is what we strive to be within our community. We provide non-traditional educational opportunities within our community to impact the economic wealth and personal well-being. Later on in this presentation, you'll see some of the programs that we do offer, and you'll see how both of those kinda tie in, the economic wealth and the personal well-being. How do we do it? Our approach: We empower the community in a variety of ways. We coordinate and we support several volunteer programs that you'll hear about a little bit later. We extend information to a diverse client base via telephone calls and walk-in visits. I'm not sure if any of you have ever visited the St. Peters location. Most of our clientele that comes in and out of the office is our agriculture clients, but we have a vast array of other programs that they come in and do onsite visits for as well. We educate the community by way of non-credit classes tailored to fit the civic need. So if there's a question about what type of grass you have, if there's a question on how to start a business in St. Charles County, if there's a question on how do I improve my health, we are there from 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, for people to just come in and ask those types of questions. And all of our services are offered free for the community, aside from the classes that we teach. And we also have a lot of onsite amenities that are available that cater to the needs, again, to our community. What is our focus? Our focus is community engagement, economic stimulation, program impact, and revenue Our platform: These are the services that are offered out of our office, and we have specialists that represent each one of these areas. We have health and nutrition, we have home lawns and gardens, farming, natural resources, personal finance, small business, 4-H youth development, and family relationships. So let's talk a little bit about our programming areas. And I won't read the information that's up there for you, however, I do want to highlight some of the programs that we do have in each specialty. So our health and nutrition portion is handled by Linda Religer, and she is a very sweet lady, if you've never met her, but some, three of her top programs are the Family Nutrition Program, the Quality for Keeps, and the Taking Care of You Body, Mind, and Spirit. She also does another program where she does food preservation, she has classes where some of our seniors come in and they participate in exercising activities that help them stay motivated and stay active, and I have to tell you, if you've ever seen one of those classes, it's really something to enjoy, because our seniors are really getting involved. Our next one, and you guys are probably familiar with Mr. Scott Kilpak, he is our Home Lawns and Gardens, Farming and Resource Agriculture Specialist, and a lot of his programming is what we handle on our day-to-day. We have a lot of walk-in clients that, you know, ask questions about grass, about bugs. The Master Gardeners Program is really phenomenal. We actually have a master gardener that sits onsite, and they are a volunteer program, and that master gardener answers all types of questions. I mean, you'd be surprised what type of questions you'd get. I was intrigued one time by one of the visitors that came in, and they had a fungus growing on their grass. And the master gardener looked the information up, and she was able to tell that individual what that fungus was and how to treat their lawn, and how to get the fungus cured from their grass. So it's a very valuable program. So we also have Master Naturalists, Field Crops and Forages, and Consumer Horticulture. Next, we have Personal Financial Planning by Mrs. Suzanne Gelman, and she does a lot with healthcare initiatives, she did a lot with Money Smart Week. Women's Financial Education Series is something that kinda helps women that are accustomed to one way of living with finances, and then they may suffer a loss through divorce or, you know, spousal, and that teaches the women how to act financially within the economy without that significant other, or how to bounce back from it. It's a really viable class. She also does the Money Smart Week, where she did the class with the St. Louis Public Library, and she was able to give information about the Affordable Care Act to the community. You have the Small Business Development Sector, which is my area, and I am new to the area. I started in this role March of this year. So we are in the process of rebuilding this program in the St. Charles County area. We've done some partnering with the St. Charles City County Library. We're gonna be offering some classes through that resource to how to start a business in St. Charles County, and how to write your business planning. We also do a building solid business relationship, so we've been working with the Economic Development Department with, over the greater St. Charles County area, to start working on programs that can impact the economy on all scopes of the area. We have our 4-H Youth Development, which I'm sure all of you all are familiar with that as well, and that is represented by Mr. John Nickler, and he does a lot. He just recently finished with the 4-H Youth Camp that was done throughout the summer, and it keeps him so busy. John is a wonderful guy. So they do the 4-H Camp, they do the Judging and Achievement Day, the 4-H Fun Festival, and they do a lot of other projects. And some of their other projects include robotics, filmmaking, shooting sports, aerospace, rockets, and photography, and so much more. Then we have Mrs. Teresa Marshall, who does programming centered on, focused on kids, Building Strong Families for Adults and Youth, Health Insurance Education Initiative, and the Emergency Preparedness Program. And the programs that I named here are only a few. I asked the specialists to give me their top three programs that they do, because I don't wanna hold your time too long, but just to give you a highlight of some of the programs that we do out of our office. So then I wanted to tell you about our support staff. Our support staff serve as the backbone of our Extension office. Their support encompasses a wide variety of services. Now, again, this is only a tip of the iceberg of what our support staff does, but some of that is the soil test processing, the program registration and evaluation. So anytime we hold classes or seminars, our support staffs handle all of the registration and the evaluation process. The maintenance of the programming database, so they create all types of spreadsheets, they do the contacts for us, they send out the information, they send out the flyers, they do the marketing piece for us, and, you know, it's, how many, if there is, one, two, three, four, five, six specialists, seven specialists in our office, and our support staff is there to help all of us. So they are really phenomenal. And they also do the individual programming support for the specialists and the specialty groups. So the Master Gardeners, the Master Naturalists, they are also the support staff for those groups as well. We have our council, our Extension Council, and it is made up of ten elected and three appointed members, and their goal is to plan and oversee all local activities prepared by the Extension faculty and staff. Their goal is to ensure proper programming, classes, and service offerings that are designed with the community in mind. And they stated it is their privilege to meet that individual need. So, why am I here today? How can you help us? We are looking for ways to better engage the community, better increase the participation and the support. We are looking for recommendations, we are looking for active participation. In October of this year, we are going to be hosting a community forum to help us better put in place some programs that will be offered for our 2015. We are working on putting together our strategic plan for 2015 as well, and in this community forum, we would like some key stakeholders to be there, so that we can hear and we can understand what it is our community is looking for with regard to family, regard to nutrition, regard to business development. So that is the reason why we are here today, in your presence, to offer and to ask for that community support and that engagement when we go before and we have our stakeholder meeting, which is in October, October 9th, to be exact. So, with that being said, do you have any questions?
Joe?
Some of your programs look like, to me, like they would overlap with what the EDC, the Economic Development Corporation, does in the county, and also some like soil testing would overlap with what the FSAI office does in St. Peters. Do you coordinate with those folks at all?
We do coordinate with those individuals. Myself, Ron Mueller, Miller, Mueller, is the EDC, so he is the exact same as I am. He's from the SBDC side, so how we coordinate that, there's a huge pie. And if it was left to one office to try to handle that, it probably wouldn't get done. So, in those instances, we have established relationship. We also work to do those programming classes together as partners, because in the end, the goal is to impact the whole St. Charles County. So yes, we do have an established relationship with both of those parties.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, or?
Well, I know Darlisa is new to the community and new to the Extension, but she's really energetic, and she has a good background in marketing, and tell us what all your background is.
So, my background is, I worked for SSM Healthcare for ten years. It was ten years this month, if I had stayed, it would've been ten years. I was a Data Integrity Specialist there. In 2011, I started my own business, which was working with small business owners to help them with their business planning and understanding their strategic side of their business. And I still have that business, it's, you know, transitioned to something different, but, so, I went to school, I received my Bachelor's in Marketing Management, I have an MBA, I also have a Master's of Information Technology, and I also am Project Management Certified. So, I enjoy learning, because I enjoy helping people.
Fantastic. Wonderful.
Any more questions? You guys are just ready to jump in and help us, right?
Whatever we can do to help. Thank you very much. Your presentation was fantastic, I like how it was so well organized, and you really covered a lot of information for us quickly, so thank you very much for that. Give us a real good overview about what you all are doing over there now, so.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, and I look forward to working with you guys in the future.
Great. Yes. Darlisa, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, next on the agenda, compare your agenda for a moment, we have a discussion on Table Bill 4087, amending various sections of the AT District.
Do you wanna have Robert and Holly come up here?
Yeah, that'd be great. Robert, Holly, we have room for you? A barricade. Okay, I appreciate, we've got quite a few people in the audience today, so as we go along, we, this part of the meeting is much more formal, when we're setting up on the dais, we have to have a little bit more of a structured meeting, so we will be able to talk to members of the audience as well, as we're going along. I'm gonna let Joe kinda, this has been something that Joe Brazel's been working on for quite a long time. I know it's, there's been several different varied changes that have evolved through time. I know he's worked with a lot of different people, so we're gonna kinda let Joe lead this part of the discussion. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Joe.
All right, guys, I'm gonna kinda recap of what has came about in the last, let's go about three or four years. The Community Development Department was running into a lot of problems with the wineries on, the way the old ordinance was, is it was growing grapes, making wine, pretty much period. Then the wineries evolved into weddings, and different events, and selling beers, and having restaurants, and all this other stuff, and so the community development was having issues with the way some of the winery ordinances were written, because they weren't compliant to our ordinances. So what we're trying to do is not be anti-business, but be more compliant with the business of the wineries. So we rewrote the ordinances, making it more business-friendly, and then we came up with the AT District. The AT District was in place, has been in place for over three years now. We wrote it in a fashion to be more business-friendly towards the wineries. Now, everyone tries to, has a different view of how the wine district should be, but we're trying to be fair about it and do what is best for everyone, which is always kinda hard to do, but you're trying to juggle a bunch of balls and make everybody happy. But, three years ago, when we came up with the AT District, it was, we were at the 75% rule on the grapes, and we were, we allowed lodging and some other things, like if you, we changed it to actually where you could have a brewery, you could have a theater, you didn't have to have a winery. If you had 40 acres, you could do these other things if it was tourist-related. And the, it was, the way we wrote the ordinance was convoluted in a way, and it was, it was almost anti-business in another way, because if you, if you did the 40-acre thing, you could only develop 7% of your ground, and parking lots were included, and all this and all that, and then some of the wineries were looking at, maybe we could do this, but then this is creating problems, because if you have a special event, and your parking lot is three acres, well, that's gonna take up like 7%, and then you have no room for buildings. So, we thought, well, we gotta make this work if we're gonna do this. So then we started looking at rewriting it, so we took out, if you read through it, we changed some things, we changed with a parking lot issue, where, okay, it can be a gravel lot for temporary parking for big events, and some other things, to make it so it's not so difficult, so it is somewhat business-friendly. And while we're reviewing it, Community Development came up, they were talking about the whole grape issue, and the grape issue seems to be the vortex of the issues here. They felt that the county has not have the wherewithal to monitor grapes, okay? And we, when they rewrote it, Wayne Anthony, the Community Development took the whole grape thing out, said that, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna just make it zero, because to be quite honest about it, it's hard to write ordinances, and if you can't enforce them, how can you write them? Because we don't have someone that goes out there and count grapes, we don't have people going into your businesses and reviewing your books. We don't do that. I mean, we don't have the resources, for one, but we just don't do that. So we're trying to make it just an honor system, which was or was not working, you know, we don't know for certain, so we took the whole grape thing out, and that's why. So, at the last meeting we had several months ago, there were, that issue was somewhat, again, the bone of contention, and so, the Grape Growers Group, the people who, I always say, the older wineries, and some of the newer wineries, wanna do some different things, trying to come to a happy medium, and the, it was said that that 75% is kind of an arbitrary number. We don't know really how that came about, it came about from years past, so yeah, we could work with that number. So, through the transition of the last couple of months, everyone should have the substitute bill, we came up with a 50% on the grapes. Tony and I have had some conversations, he was concerned that we were discounting the wine district, or not having wineries, but having wine bars, and having breweries, and things like that. So, I don't know if you noticed, but in the new ordinance, we, you have to have a winery first, okay? We came to that conclusion, that that was probably a good idea, that you cannot have a theater, you cannot have a brewery, you cannot just have a restaurant, you have to have a winery first. And then with that winery, everything from that point on is a conditional use. So, if you wanna have a theater, then you have to have a conditional use to the wine permit, or you have to have a conditional use for the brewery, but you have to have a winery first. And we also agreed that you have to have five acres of grapes on-premise, and you also have to buy 50% of your grapes from St. Charles County. So those are some things that we agreed on. Let's see, the other changes that we added was, we added a duly license from the state of Missouri in there. We added, let's see, I think those are some pretty strong things that we added. Now, the other thing is, is there was some language sent over that was much more restrictive on the 80% rule, and we're gonna allow everybody to talk and explain their positions, but from the perspective of our county council, I was sending that information, forwarding that from all sides, saying, take a look at this, see what you think, and give us your opinion. Tell me what you think, and see what we should do with this, if possible. And our feedback was, is you have to be very careful on restricting competition through planting and zoning. In some retrospect, it could be considered unconstitutional. And so, that was the line we had, that we had to be very careful with how we wrote this ordinance, and how restrictive we were, because you cannot be, you cannot restrict competition through zoning. And that was the legal feedback I was getting. So that's kinda where we're at. So we tried, and I feel that we did a fairly good job, of trying to meet all conditions of everybody, to try everybody to work together, and give, leave the 50% rule in there, and do some work with, and also, what we're doing is, one of the ordinances is passed, all conditions, if you were doing it a certain way, then you're allowed to do it that way. The new rules are gonna be enacted once this ordinance is passed. So if you've been doing certain things a certain way, like doing weddings and doing other stuff, and you're not in the AT District, I mean, you're grandfathered, so we're saying from here on out, when you do a new winery, or you do something else, or you take the AT District on, then you have to follow the AT District conditions. And so, and if I didn't explain anything right, Holly, let me know. Robert's with Community Development, and so that's kinda where we're at. So, I think if the council has anything, or, or you guys wanna add anything, or you wanna get comments from?
I think I'd like to turn it open to comments from, unless, Joe, do you have something?
Yeah, I got several. I mean, there's a lot of conditions in this thing, like the pitch of the roofs, and the 7% footprint's still in there, and cellular type of paving, the type of landscaping. I mean, as a businessman myself, I look at this, I think, boy, I'm glad I'm not in the winery business, because there's a lot of hoops you gotta jump through here. Is this stuff that we already have now, that we're just modifying to make clear? Or is this all new restrictions?
This is, they're new restrictions, but here's how we look at this, is, if we have a vision, and I'm not, you know, I'm not the end-all, say-all, but I was talking to other people, and I'm thinking that all the wineries now, that they're there are established, right? If more wineries wanna come out there, and they wanna do, they don't have to, they're still, the winery ordinance is still in place. You could have 16 acres and have a winery, or 10 acres, or whatever, if you follow the winery conditions, strictly only a winery. If you wanna do the AT District, where you wanna do other things, if you wanna have a winery, and then have a theater, and then have a brewery, then you have to, you're gonna concede to say, I will agree to the AT District, but I do have to do these special conditions. We don't wanna have metal pole barns out there. We don't wanna have, we want it to look, have some value. And that was kinda what we thought we wanted to do, that, what that, I think, was the vision, to make it, you don't, just someone to put up a 100-by-30 pole barn and call it a winery. Because all the other wineries put a lot of energy into what they have, and you don't wanna undermine it, and that was the train of thought. So you don't have to do the AT District, if you don't do the AT District, then you don't have to do this.
You don't have to do the gabled roof.
Yeah, and all that stuff.
But, two different clad exterior walls, and stuff like that.
Right, and from what I understand, those are, that there's like a book that gives you, they're recommendations, or how, tell me how that works, the architectural.
There are some architectural design guidelines that go with the district, which we can review in order to understand what the overall intent of the ordinance is. The overall concept is the zoning is agricultural, and so the attempt is to ensure that the uses that are in the area are primarily agricultural or agricultural production, but we realize that in certain circumstances, it may be acceptable to allow certain non-agricultural uses, but kind of isolated on a tract, so that they're not bothering their neighbors in the area. You mentioned the cellular paving, it's not, it wouldn't be a requirement to do cellular paving, the way I understand it's reading now, but it would give credit for someone developing a winery, that if they use paving that allowed the grass to grow up through it, that, so it doesn't look like a sea of parking, that they would get some extra credit on the 7% rule. The 7% rule is intended to ensure that the land is still predominantly agricultural, because the overall concept is agricultural zoning. And also, frankly, the 75% rule, 50% rule, whatever number you wanna use, that's, was never intended from zoning perspective to be used to try to limit competition, or decide where grapes are gonna come from, other than to help preserve the agricultural character of the area. That was intended to ensure that, again, the area remains predominantly agricultural. And I'll give you one quick example. Let's just say that you allow farm stands out in an agricultural area, and you allow someone who grows crops on their farm to sell those in a farm stand. You, there's, it's perfectly acceptable to say that you can only sell things in the farm stand, for instance, that you've grown on the property, or some minor amount of other things, as opposed to someone opening a farm stand, selling, selling grapefruit, lemons, and basically it becomes a grocery store at an agricultural area. Grocery store is perfectly fine in a commercial area, but in agriculture area, it's a finite, the land is a finite resource, and also the rural character is a finite resource, so it's all intended to help preserve that, but to also allow some commercial development too. So that's the trick here, is really to balance the commercial interests and the agricultural interests.
And one other question I had, too. What I heard you say, Joe, and what's in the bill's a little different, you said 50% of the grapes have to be grown in the county, but here it says 50% have to be grown on the site. If you've got a guy that's got a nice, pretty facility on 94, but maybe he's got 40 acres down a gravel road where he grows most of his grapes, is this ordinance flexible enough where he can use those grapes to count towards his 94?
It's supposed to say county, does it say onsite?
It says site, I see.
If the wine that is produced onsite has to be produced from grapes-
It's the wine that is produced onsite has to be produced from grapes grown in the county. So, the grapes can be countywide, and it's talking, and it's regulating production that takes place on the site.
At least fifty percent of the grapes used in the wine produced onsite must be grown on the premises. As the premises include the forty acres the guy buys, owns a couple of miles down the road?
Grown on the premises or grown in, in the area of not less than.
Okay, so you're covered there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Within the county. If I can jump in, what, what was the significance of the five acres?
The significance of that is, is to maintain the rural characteristic of the, of the wine district, so people see grapes growing on the hillsides, that's why. I mean, you know, I know that some people may not like that, but all these wineries already have five acres of grapes, so anybody new coming in would have to have five acres of grapes.
Okay, so if you had four, if you have four acres, you're, you can't sell them to other people either, though?
Well, you'd have to have forty acres to do an AT District, so you're going to have the land. Okay?
But it also prevents me from buying grapes from somebody that doesn't.
No, 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 you have to have five acres of grapes, but you can buy fifty percent of your grapes, the way it's supposed to be written, Holly, is you can buy fifty percent of your grapes from, from.
That's not what this says, though.
This is, this is not a change in this version of the ordinance. The ordinance, as it's on the books now, says that it needs to be five acres of grapes.
This is talking about the grapes that you're, that you're buying from down the road? Has to be grown in an area not less than five acres in size within St. Charles County. So, if there's a farmer down the road that has four acres of, of grapes, you can't buy from him, you got to buy from somebody that's got five acres.
Well, that's not what it's, is that what it says, tell me?
That is what it says, and that's.
But there's another, there's another portion that says you can buy grapes, you have to have five acres, what the intention is, and tell me if it, you know, it's supposed to say five acres of grapes on premise.
That's up here. You have to have the five acres of grapes to be a winery. To be cultivated. And at least fifty percent of your grapes have to be produced within, you know, St. Charles County. But this is the part that didn't make any sense to me, you have to buy them from a grower.
With five acres.
With five acres.
That has, it should be, are grown.
As long as.
Off premise in St. Charles County.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that, I just.
I think that's just, that's a typo, right, Holly? I mean, that's, yeah.
That is, that is what the ordinance on the book says currently, so perhaps what it sounds like you all want is to remove the language on the area of not less than five acres in size, so that it just says, grown on the premises or grown within St. Charles County.
That's correct.
Line two, page three.
No, you're right, Joe, that's right, that's, that's a typo. Where, where, where do you, where do you, right here?
Yep.
Okay, so we delete this here.
Actually, an even simpler solution, I'm sorry, would be wine produced onsite must be grown within St. Charles County.
All right.
Within, must be grown within St., okay.
When we get to the, when we get back up here, you need to make that.
Addendum.
That motion.
I have a question for you, Joe. I understand it's a real fine line between protecting all those people that have put their time, talent, and treasure into these wineries, from the guys that are going to open up a pole barn and sell Mogan David in a styrofoam cup, okay? But my question to you is, do you think this is going to help both preserve the atmosphere that helps these folks be successful, and still keep the door open for the new guy that comes in and wants to start a winery dinner? They can work with this, you think?
We're trying to, yeah, I mean, this, this ordinance, AT ordinance, has been in, in place for three years, but then we just tweaked it to make it more compatible, make it more friendly.
Okay.
I mean, that's what we're trying to do, you know, I mean, that's why we had so many public hearings and so forth, for everybody's input, and we took everybody's input, it's not like we didn't. And Tony, by the way, I didn't mention on page, one of these pages, we do have the ability now, on page fifth, what page is it now? We didn't, we never had it in the, in the ordinances before, but now we can, you have the right, the.
Thirteen?
Well, page thirteen. When you're concerned about the records, we do have the ability now, because it's in the ordinance, to, if someone is not in compliant, we have the right to look at their, their books on the wine deal. But if, this is what everyone's agreeing to, they shouldn't have a problem with that. And that's, you know, whether or not we have the resources, at least we have the ability by law now to do that. We didn't have that in it before.
Anything else? We have a couple of questions, I see all some hands up in the audience. Yes.
I'm Tony Ciumbs, and I own Montell and Augusta Wineries, and I've been in business for thirty-five years. So, our group consists of four wineries. They've, they've been established for quite a few years. I think the newest one is seven or eight years, and ranging up to over thirty-five years. We are in favor of keeping the existing ordinance. This ordinance is over thirty years old. It's, it works good, it's lasted a long time. It's prevented problems from neighbors and police and, and all this sort of thing. So, by having some restrictions on, on a, on a winery, it, it prevents just everybody from coming in and buying five acres of land and putting up a semi-winery and, and selling wine and beer and mixed drinks, and having music and all that sort of thing. It puts some restriction on, the people have to have some investment in it. And I agree a hundred percent on council's last comments. There's no one in our group that wants to restrict competition. We would like to define competition, we would like to define what a winery is, and we would like to define a winery so that it's compatible with St. Charles County Agricultural District.
Tony, I'm trying to play catch-up real quick. Someone come in, I, I agree with you, we don't, we don't want honky-tonks and.
Right.
And all that, on small tracts of ground. And the way I understand it, and somebody, tell me if I got it wrong, you'd still have to have forty acres, not, not five acres to get started. You'd still have to have, if you want, if you want to do these other things, you'd have to have the forty acres, you'd have to grow at least five acres of grapes there, before you could start and have a, a restaurant or any of these ancillary businesses associated with the wine district. You'd still have to have, if you want, if you want to do these other things, you'd have to have the forty acres, you'd have to grow at least five acres of grapes there, before you could start and have a, a restaurant or any of these ancillary businesses associated with the wine district.
That's right, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, there's actually two things that, that are included in on this ordinance.
Okay.
Two of the things are involved with the agricultural district. And that would be the winery ordinance, and then adding restaurant as a conditional use in the agricultural district.
This says you have to be a winery first.
No, that's, that's the AT District. So, there's two things that are happening here. Number one is the agricultural district, which allows wineries on five acres, presumably. Then you have something new, this is a three-year-old ordinance, which is the AT District. The, the winery ordinance goes back thirty years.
We're not touching the winery ordinance.
That one still stays.
That's the same. This is only if you want an AT District. So, I mean, for the winers, if you're not in favor of this, and for the winners.
This is the ordinance, correct? This is six twenty-three. Now, there's, there's, there's actually three ordinances floating around, the original ordinance, the first ordinance that Joe proposed, and now there's a second revision, okay?
We're looking at substitute bill four oh eight seven, and it doesn't seem to have a date.
Yeah, and it's, the draft is nine point five dash fourteen.
We've got eighteen pages.
Okay, so here's, unless I'm misreading this, it says section one, section one oh five point zero six zero, which is the winery ordinance in the agricultural district. Definitions, it changes everything.
This is under the AT District.
According to the.
Let's have Holly answer that if we could, just.
Yeah, go.
Straight from the.
In section one, four oh five dot zero six zero, that definition of winery does apply in both A and AT districts. And then in section two, which modifies four oh five dot zero eight zero, that is adding restaurant back in as a conditional use under the A agricultural district.
So, what's that saying, Tony, for the winers, you have, Rush, do you have a conditional use permit for your restaurant right now?
No, it's permitted. It's permitted under our conditional use. Does anyone want to look at the, the original ordinance? Because this is really confusing. The, this revision does not include one sentence from the original ordinance. There's a couple of words, but there's not one complete sentence that transfers from the original ordinance thirty years ago to this one right here. And we have a lot of concerns, and I know you're going to limit my time, Mr. Chairman, but.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
One of the big concerns that I have, and maybe this is the biggest one, aside from the integrity of the wine district, that, that a lot of people have been working on for, for decades, okay? If this ordinance is passed the way it is, there's nothing from, nothing stopping anyone in unincorporated St. Charles County from buying five acres, putting up what looks to be a tavern, calling it a winery, and selling wine, beer, and mixed drinks.
Hold that, that thought for just a second. Is there anything in this that would prevent someone from doing that?
Well, if you are in the A District, then it is, Robert may be able to speak better to this, but if you're in the A District, then you may not have a microbrewery or some of those other conditional uses. If you're in the AT District, then you have to have the forty acres and your winery where you're producing wine first, before you can have the microbrewery or the restaurant.
Right, it would be considered on a case-by-case basis, and it'd be approved by the county council, or disapproved, one or the other.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like there's current regulations that include that definition, everything, and, and we're, we're not changing that, we're just changing these sections of the current codes of St. Charles County. Being the four oh five, that's four oh five point oh eight and oh eight five, is that what we're doing, or are we just, are we rewriting the whole section?
What you have before you includes a, an amendment to the definition of winery? And honestly, for, as a planning and zoning professional, I think the wording now is more clear to me in terms of enforcement. The wording right now, for the definition, doesn't even technically, the way I read it, until you get the very last sentence, it doesn't even obligate you to produce wine on the property. You know, it gets close to requiring you to, but it's not until the very last sentence. And there's some ambiguous terms, so I think in, in that respect, the proposed definition is, is a lot better. Now, in addition to those changes for the ease of administration, there is a substantive change, and that would be the, the percentage, the percentage requirement. So, that would be a substantive change. And I think part of that is a reflection of what we heard throughout, throughout all this discussion, about maybe there needs to be more flexibility if a wine has, or St. Charles County has a, has a, a year that the production is not very good. Is that really going to place a severe limitation on what they're able to do?
You brought up a good point, though, Sylvia. Can you start a winery on five acres of ground? Does it need to be forty? I thought you still had to have forty.
In the A District, you would have to have, in the A District, you would have to grow five acres of grapes.
The, the A District, though, correct me if I'm wrong, but the winery definite, if somebody wants to come in and do a winery, what we're doing has nothing to do, what we've done has nothing to do with the past winery ordinances. What we're doing is dealing with if you want to do an AT District, if you want to do some extra things, you have to have a winery first, you have to have forty acres, you have to have a winery first, and then you can get everything secondary from that with a conditional use permit.
That's accurate, but in, on page two, section four oh five dot zero six zero, that definition of winery applies to wineries in the A District and the AT District.
So, but that's how it's, is that how it's always been, or what?
Yes.
So, that's how it's always been, but we haven't had a, I mean, every one of these permits comes across the board as a discretionary situation, it's not permissible by law. So, I mean, it's, that's how, that's always been, Tony.
It's a conditional use, is that what you mean, Joe?
No, what, what you're saying, Holly, is the winery definition has always been this way, is what you're saying, this portion of it? Because the AT District, what we're dealing with now, from, correct me if I'm wrong, we're dealing with the AT District. If you want to do an AT District, if these guys all got wineries, they're just going to, they're doing business as usual. If they want to do other things, if you have a conditional use permit, then you're grandfathered in on all those other things.
Yeah, but it's not going to change what happens in the future. If, and, and if you give me enough time, I will show you step by step, through what's been changed in this ordinance, how somebody can buy five acres on Highway T, Double D, ninety-four, you know, you name it, and they can put up a building, and they can act like they're a bar.
But see, that to me, if, if I'm, Holly, that is the winery ordinance. Now, we're dealing with the AT District, okay? Those are two separate issues, they should be.
It's on the same ordinance, Joe.
In the A District and in the AT District, one of the conditional uses listed is winery. The definition for winery in both of those is the same. So, that is accurate.
So, what I'm saying, Tony, we didn't, we didn't do anything with the winery definition, is that what you're saying?
There are changes to the winery definition.
But I mean, if you want to, if you, if you were going to, if you had ten acres, let's say, and you want to go do a winery, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about. That's, that hasn't been touched. And, and.
What's that?
It does with what you're talking about, though, right?
The whole ordinance has been changed. This is the, this is the original ordinance, and there's not one sentence contained in the revised ordinance that was in the original ordinance. So, the entire thing has been changed, and we can go through it step by step, and I'll tell you what has been changed and why it's bad for this county. I live in the agricultural district, you know, I don't necessarily want a bunch of little honky-tonks opening up, or liquor stores that are open all night long and stuff like that, I think it's inappropriate. It's never been allowed in the ag district. Bars have never been allowed in the ag district.
But.
Restaurants have never been allowed in the ag district. Liquor stores have never been allowed in the ag district.
But Tony, Tony, none of that is acceptable, that, that doesn't, it's not going to happen in this ordinance. You have to have forty acres with the AT District. What I'm saying is, with the AT District, you have to have forty acres and a winery, period.
Joe, we need, we need, we need to, we need to, we need to separate these things, because four oh five point zero six zero is the winery definition. It applies to the wineries in the agricultural district, and it applies to wineries in the AT District. All that would be required is five acres. There is no requirement for a winery license. You've removed the requirement for operating under a domestic winery license.
Hold that thought. Can I, can I, if I buy five acres of ground on, on Double D, can I, can I put a bar in? Is there anything in this that prohibits me from, from opening Mike's Bar?
To be able to operate a winery in any district.
I'm not talking about a winery, I just want to open a bar.
There's nothing that says you may open a bar in the A District, regardless of how many acres you have.
Five acres, ten acres, it doesn't matter.
A thousand acres, doesn't matter.
Okay.
Mike?
The thing is, it says here, all wines produced at the winery produced under a license duly issued by the state of Missouri, that could be a liquor by the drink. And that is, unfortunately, at the state level, there, there was, there was a problem. That problem is trying to be remedied, but what happened is, is that the state tried to help out wineries, because they said, hey, look at, you know, we, we can only sell wine, there's a lot of people that come to the wineries, want to have a beer, you know? Could you allow us to sell beers? And they said, okay, here's what you do, you buy a liquor by the drink license, okay? Now, you can act like a liquor store, you can act like a bar, you can do any of these things, there's no restrictions on what you can do. There's no restrictions on what you can do. And without the county defining exactly what a winery is and how a winery can operate, by saying you can operate under any license that's issued by the state of Missouri, you're opening up the door for all kinds of phony wineries opening up and just pretending like they're a winery and, and being a bar.
I appreciate your comments, I, I do. We do have other people that want to speak also.
I have a question for him.
Go ahead, Joe. You first, and then we'll, we'll move on.
You probably know the area as well as anybody, you've been down there forever. There's a lot of really nice places down there, a lot of nice wineries. So obviously, the original ordinances that we have were flexible enough that it enabled folks like you and others to, to build wineries down there. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay. Secondly, is the, what, commonly, what I call Mogan David in a Styrofoam cup, but other people are calling honky-tonks, is there a problem down in that district right now when people open all-night liquor stores and bars and stuff like that? Is there a problem we need to fix, or is it working good the way it is?
In, well, if you drive through Defiance on a Saturday night, I, I'm not going to make any comment, I would just say, take a look at it yourself, there's people standing in the streets.
Well, yeah, those taverns have been there a long time.
They've been there a long time, and they're zoned commercially, they're, they're not, they're not pretending to be wineries.
With new businesses, with new guys coming in, putting up a pool barn and selling wine coming in from, and liquor-by-the-drink and that, is that a problem down there right now?
Not yet. But it, it, it could be. You know, fortunately, um, you know, one of the last wineries that opened up, Noblesse Winery, they did a really fantastic job, and, and they make their own wines, they do all that sort of thing. It's a, it's a, it's, it's a tribute to the, uh, community. If I could just finish the one comment, and then I'll get, get out of here, okay?
One minute.
So, what, what I was saying is that our group is not trying to limit competition, in fact, we embrace competition. If somebody wants to come and grow grapes and, and have a winery and, and enhance our district, make us more like Napa Valley or, or the Finger Lakes in New York, where they've got three million visitors a year, I say, let's have it, you know? What we don't want to do is have a, a situation where people can open up under the auspices of a winery and act like a bar or a phony winery or something like that. I'm not saying that they're in the place, this is exactly what council said, I'm not saying that they're in the place for this kind of business, there is, but it's probably in more of an urban setting, you know? It's, 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 it's not in the ag district.
Dale, did I see your hands up? Okay, come on up.
You can cut through her.
You're very thin.
Let me limit my comments to a certain area. First off, I, I heard what Tony has to say, I've heard what you all have had to say, and interestingly enough, I'm in a commercial area, so I'm not really affected by what you're doing with the AT zoning. Um, my, my property is zoned commercial, and I'm across the street from the, from the biker bars, and so I, all the AT stuff doesn't really apply to me, and unless you're going to make it apply to commercial districts, it doesn't really apply to me. What I really want to talk to you about, though, is the, the seventy-five percent rule. I will try to make that as brief as I can, I, I have a bullet point summary, which I think will be, will shorten anything I have to say on that issue. Joe indicated that you were thinking about maybe putting in a fifty percent rule, but if you go through and you look at the seventy-five percent rule, it's really difficult to justify it. And in fact, I haven't heard anybody, even those who favor the seventy-five percent rule, state what I consider to be a good reason for retaining the seventy-five percent rule. It's just almost not sustainable. First off, there's no difference in quality in the grapes grown in St. Charles County and those grown across the line in Warren County, or Lincoln County, or any other county in Missouri. There's no difference in quality, so you can't justify it on a quality issue. St. Charles grapes, St. Charles grapes have no recognized market, market or labeling recognition. The world doesn't know what a St. Charles County grape is like, they don't know what it's, what it is, why it's better or worse than anybody else. There's no recognition of a St. Charles County grape. St. Charles County growers are not capable of producing all of the grapes needed by St. Charles County wineries. The truth of the matter is that the majority of wineries in this country and in Missouri procure grapes from other places, and those other places can be anywhere from right down the road to a long way away. But grapes are a, are a raw material, in the same way that corn, wheat, and soybeans are, they're a commodity. In fact, grapes are a commodity. You pay so much per ton to buy grapes, and grapes per ton in this, in this county goes for a certain price, and go in the next county goes for a certain price, and they're pretty consistent because it's a commodity. A seventy-five percent requirement actually restricts St. Charles County wineries' production if they cannot find the grapes they want within the county. If you have to go outside to find the grape that you want, you're, you actually restrict it with that seventy-five percent rule because that keeps you from using other purchases, your, your seventy-five percent, um, or your twenty-five percent, uh, uh, remaining purchasing power. Here's one that I think nobody's talked about very much, I heard it mentioned for the first time tonight, though, and that is, a seventy-five percent requirement is really anti-competitive, in that it protects St. Charles County growers from competition from other Missouri vineyards, and it constitutes a form of monopoly. Now, I'm not talking against growers, I'm a grower, I grow grapes too. So I'm not, it's not us versus them, but you can't protect one segment of the grape-growing population and hold the other segment off by saying you can't buy those people's grapes. A seventy-five percent requirement gives the larger wineries with larger vineyards an unfair advantage over smaller vineyard owners who are required to buy grapes from other vineyards to supply their winery production needs. You can probably count on one hand, probably on two fingers, to be honest with you, the growers in, the, the wineries in St. Charles County that are capable of growing enough grapes for their own needs. And frankly, it was that grower or those growers that got this ordinance in to begin with to put pressure on the small wineries, saying they had to buy grapes either from them or other local sources. No other county in this state has a requirement like this. And that ought to tell you something. Missouri is a pretty good-sized grape-growing state now, we have over a hundred and twenty-five wineries in the state, they're scattered all over the place. We have a Missouri Wine and Grape Board that does an excellent job of marketing Missouri grapes, and we're producing a lot of grapes and a lot of wine in this country, in this state. And yet, nobody, nobody, no other county has looked at restricting the purchase of grapes to that county in any percentage. Seventy-five percent requirement is a, is a compounding of unnecessary regulation in view of the Missouri requirement that eighty-five percent of all grapes used in Missouri wineries be grown in Missouri. In other words, we have a state law that says Missouri wineries are required to use eighty-five percent Missouri-grown grapes. If you pass or, or reenact this ordinance, or you let it stand, what you're really doing is compounding that, so the St. Charles County winery, you're putting them at a disadvantage, has to comply with two percentages, not just one. It's just a compounding of, of legal requirements, and in my opinion, it's overreaching. And finally, I'm very sympathetic of something here. The area down in Augusta, and that's obviously in our county, has passed and gotten through a historic AVA district, and there are several wineries of which I think Tony is, is one of the people in that district. And if they want to have a percentage requirement, that's okay with me. If they want to say grapes made and grown in AVA District number one, the first district of its kind in the United States, have to come from that district, have to be grown in that district, I don't have any problem with that. But don't put the burden of the AVA requirement on those of us who are not in that district, and that's the other wineries in St. Charles County. It's actually loading of these requirements onto the, 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 all of the wineries, which really, I think, are intended to benefit the wineries within the AVA. So we're burdened with the requirement with none of the benefits. So I, I, my, my point is this, you can talk all you want to about reducing it from seventy-five to fifty percent, and frankly, it's not being enforced, it's not enforceable, you don't have the mechanism to enforce it. We pretty much volunteer, we may have gone over it a time or two, but most of the time, we're within the seventy-five percent pretty easily. We grow virtually all of our grapes, or we buy all of our grapes from Missouri, and we make all of our wine on our premises. So the end result is that the percentage is probably unsustainable in any number. Seventy-five, fifty, thirty-five, twenty. But if it takes fifty percent to resolve this issue, I hope we won't get off on that as a result of, I mean, get off of, and derail the discussion of what ought to be done in this AT District. The seventy-five percent, folks, is a, is an economic issue. It's really not a zoning issue. It's an issue that pertains to marketing, it pertains to the economic side of grape farming and, 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 and grape production. It really has very little to do with either the definition of a winery, it has to do with the definition of a vineyard, but it doesn't have a lot to do with the definition of a winery.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins, it's.
And so I think, I think you really ought to get rid of it, but if it takes fifty percent, you're not going to give more problems than me.
One question.
Go ahead.
If you do, if we do eliminate that, what impact will it have on the local wine growers?
It'll remove the inhibition to purchase other and more experimental and different wines to sell in St. Charles County. I'll give you a classic example. We sell a wine that was just approved last year called Aramella. Aramella, you've never heard of it, but we offer it, we've offered it for quite a while while it was in its experimental stage, but nobody in St. Charles County is growing Aramella. It's a pretty darn good little wine. We have a grower up in central Missouri at Ellsbury that grows Aramella. Now, why shouldn't I be able to buy grapes from that fellow up in, in Ellsbury? Or why should I have to use up my twenty-five percent to buy grapes from, from, from the guy? If, 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 if the grapes are available, let St. Charles County growers buy grapes where they want to, or wineries grow, buy grapes where they want to.
My question was, what economic advantage would there be to the growers in St. Charles County?
Well, the truth is, there probably won't be any because nobody pays a lot of attention to the seventy-five percent rule anymore. And I'm not being smart with that, I'm just trying to tell you that. In fact, until this issue came up in the, in this thing here, I think there are a couple of wineries out here that never even heard of the seventy-five percent rule. Other questions? Thank, yes.
The eighty-five percent rule, that, for instance, your, your scenario under the state law, you can buy those grapes up there because it just says eighty-five percent has to be Missouri-grown.
Right.
Are you good with, I mean, obviously, we can't do anything about that anyway, but it seems to me like that would give you the flexibility, if we had the same thing as state law, you'd have the same, you'd have, instead of making it St. Charles County or on-site, if it was state law, wouldn't that, would that satisfy?
Let me be sure, Joe, that I understand your, your comment, but the eighty-five percent rule, that, that's the state rule, says you can buy from this pool, okay? And that pool is statewide. Now, St. Charles comes in and says, no, you can't buy from that pool up to eighty-five percent, you, you, we shrink the pool down to seventy-five percent. So we've got one layer, two layers that we've got to comply with. It, it's, it's a little confusing when you start looking at.
Does the state enforce that eighty-five percent rule for you?
Yeah, you darn right they do.
Well, I, I think Joe's question was, if we, if we made our rule follow state rule, is that, am I understanding that was your question?
Yes.
If we made, if we made our rule follow state rule, you would be fine with that?
No. No. Why, why, why would you do that to me? The state says I can buy, I can buy grapes from Ellsbury at least fif, I can buy fifteen percent, I, I mean, a hundred percent from Ellsbury. St. Charles County would be saying I could only buy fifteen percent from Ellsbury.
No. We would make our rule would follow Missouri.
No, we already got, they are going to do that by state law.
We already have to do that.
But it doesn't matter, you don't.
I, I don't think we're communicating. Look.
We're not.
And maybe I'm missing your point.
I think we are.
The state says we can buy from the pool of growers within the boundaries of the state of Missouri.
Right.
And, and, but if we have to go outside, we can get fifteen percent from other, from other places.
But I believe Joe's question was, if, if ours mirrored Missouri, not St. Charles, if we mirrored the Missouri rule, you would be fine with that, because you're living within it now.
Yeah, and, and here's where I misunderstood you, I think your question was, if ours said you could buy eighty-five percent, you had to buy eighty-five percent throughout the state of Missouri.
Yes.
Yeah, oh.
Thanks.
Sure, you're not, you're, you're, it'd be a mirror image of the state rule, but, but, um, yeah, I wouldn't have any problems with that. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't add any burden on anybody.
Tony, you've already spoken, we're going to have some other.
Can I just respond real quickly?
Thirty seconds, no, fifteen seconds, go. Fifteen seconds, from there.
After we had the last meeting, Dale and Chuck Gilantine said they were okay with the eighty-five percent Missouri, they have a problem with the seventy-five percent St. Charles County. I called up Joe, I sent him a proposed ordinance that changed it from seventy-five percent to fifty percent, and the only changes were is that it, it clarified the eighty-five percent Missouri-grown grapes. And everybody in my group is happy with that. There was never an argument about that. I, it's probably too late to pass these things out.
The gentleman with the glasses, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, I know you spoke last time. Come on up, please.
Come on down.
Mr. Rollins, thank you very much.
Dr. Bill Sadler and I'm a grower in Augusta. I do not own a winery, so I am part of this grower community. I guess my comments I want to make to the, to the board or to the group is, this is a little bit about brand building, okay? And relaxing standards is easy. And the challenge I think we're all trying to face is the direction that St. Charles County wants to eventually go to, and do we want to reach Joe a Napa Valley, or, or do we have the ability to do that? I don't have the answer to that, but what I do know is the areas that have succeeded in doing that have had these types of restrictions. Fifty, seventy-five, I don't know the right number, but what I do know is for forty years of business fairly successfully, you've got to build brands, and whether it's St. Charles or it's Augusta or Defiance or whatever, I would encourage the board not to dilute. If I say Snickers, you all have an image. What a brand is, is a shortcut for you to bring value to what that is. Any brand name you know lets you do that. Because St. Charles County does not, I, nothing against what the gentleman said, has not had yet a definition of that, or does not market it that way, that's, that's maybe for the future. But I think a brand and what we're trying to build in St. Charles County is extremely valuable, and if we continue to dilute it, I think we continue to hurt what we're, our brand is going to be for the future. And it's, and it's easy to dilute it. It's easy to say today, make it shorter, take less peanuts out of the Snickers, do all those things, but it isn't the same product. And I encourage the group to really keep that in mind as you go for it. Again, I'm a grape grower. My comment would be is there's lots of land in St. Charles County, and if you can't find the grapes you want, my answer is you haven't sourced them or asked somebody to grow them. That's what you want to have happen. We want to build the value of the property, we want to grow what we can grow down there, and whether that's anti-competitive, I, I'm not sure I can define it as such, but I think it's important that we know that. One thing I will disagree with the gentleman, though, and that is quality and grapes are not, repeat, are not commodities. In France, you talk about which rows the grapes come from, there is lots of data all over the world that says the field that grapes are growing in has a huge, huge impact. And if you don't believe that, go to the store and watch what it's about. So no, I do disagree, if we're going to build a brand for Augusta, Defiance, St. Charles County, diluting the product and allowing it to come from everywhere and anywhere is not going to help this county in the long term. And I would just ask you to keep that in mind. Chain sets, move, roof angles, I don't think I know enough to say, but what I do know is this is what it's going to take if we want to build a brand and live with the people in the world. And we got the number-one AVA, there's nothing to say Defiance can't get the next one, so please keep that in mind as you make your decision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hold on, please. Don't.
Sorry, sir, didn't mean to jump too soon.
No, that's okay. So, define for me about geographically, what makes up the ABA now?
It's a geographic definition that we can show you on, on a map. I mean, I don't know that I know the barriers right off the bat, but.
I guess the, the reason I'm asking is Dale's bringing up the point that he's in a commercial district, he's not in the ABA. So he's outside of that area. And I agree completely. I'm in marketing, brother, I hear you. Branding is everything.
Everything.
And Snickers without peanuts is a Milky Way. I hear you.
That's right.
So, you know, I, I'm not disputing you on that. And, and I agree, quality is the number-one standard there, and it's something that we can't hang our head on. I will disagree with you on whether or not this has been branded well over the years. I think it's been branded poorly at home. I don't think people in St. Louis area understand what the ABA is, know that we even have it. There's a small number of folks who, who do that. That's just my experience in working with a few of the wineries out there and, and doing marketing going back fifteen years now in advertising that. But my point about that is, why can't we do both?
Well, see, let me ask, let me, let me interject. Dr. Sandler, there is one group that opposes the grapes completely.
I understand that.
Yeah. And then the other group was, was seventy-five percent. And so, meeting in the middle with one side, so I, I came up with fifty percent. Now, there's going to be some council members who don't agree, make it zero. But I thought since this group thought that was a fair number, and this group thought it was a fair number, kind of meeting in the middle. And that's, that's where, that's where I got there. Now, is it right or wrong? I don't know. I'm just trying to make it work, you know? And so that's how that number came up with. Tony said himself that he could work with fifty percent at one of the meetings. And that's why we came up with that number.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the fifty percent. I'm just saying is, as you build the ordinances, please keep in mind that we're building a brand of value. Marketed well or not, I'm not going to disagree with that. But I will guarantee you that the reason Sonoma gets the piggyback is because of Napa, okay? And if we don't protect, I think, the district and the county, we have, and I will disagree, you mentioned about who knows or who doesn't know, that's the brand building. We've had wine dinners, I've had people walk into our, into our vineyard on a very special dinner that said, I drink nothing but California Cabernet's and I will not touch another wine. Two hours later after dinner, I was asked, where do I buy these wines? Why can't I find these? Because they didn't know. So that's the tough part of marketing. And all I want to say to the council is, please, when you're voting tonight, keep in mind, we're building a brand, it's hard work, it takes lots and lots of years, and just don't dilute anything, or change anything about definitions or whatever that damage or hurt what we're trying to build, I think, for the long term.
I think you're bringing that point home.
Yeah, well, so that's, any other questions?
I have a question, I think Joe would might know. You know, speaking about brands, Herman's got a pretty good brand for the wine district, and so does St. Genevieve, okay? Do either one of those areas have seventy-five or fifty percent grape restrictions like that?
I would say no, but someone else can answer this.
Is no of that?
No. Do we have a pro? Do we have one more time for a pro, someone in favor?
He's here for somebody else.
All right. Yes, sir.
He's against, you've got three of them.
I don't know who he is. I have no idea.
Oh, but you've got to keep it even and odd.
I'm Rick Balducci of Balducci Vineyards. I think going forward for any new wineries, I think it's extremely important that the definition of a winery includes a domestic winery license. It's required by the state of Missouri, there's reasons for it, the eighty-five percent rule is one reason. But opening this up to a retail-by-the-drink, or five percent beer, or whatever, it's, it's opening it up to a lot of problems, I think. And, and I just feel that the domestic winery license, if you're going to open a winery, get the license that has the details in it that requires you to be a winery, according to the state of Missouri and St. Charles County.
Holly, wouldn't you be required to have a domestic wine license?
Not necessarily. Under the state of Missouri, there are at least two types of licenses that you could get, that a winery could get. One is the domestic winery, and one is a twenty-two percent wine manufacturer solicitor. And that also requires that two-hundred gallons of wine be produced annually, so.
You're suggesting.
But it's not in the new ordinance. In the new writing, there, it's, it's not in there.
You're suggesting.
The domestic winery license is not in there, the twenty-two percent isn't in there. It just says a license issued by the state of Missouri. It could be a retail-by-the-drink.
Is there any reason not to put domestic winery license in there?
I think the reason not to specify would be that if the state of Missouri were to add a new type of license, then it would be covered. If they were to, you know, change this to a different name, then it would be covered. And it really makes that a question for each winery to address with the state of Missouri, rather than us saying you have to have one particular license, and you may not have this other license that you otherwise would be able to. The only other thing I would say is that the definition that relates to the license from the state of Missouri only regulates the license under which you produce your wine, and it does not affect a license under which you are selling wine, for instance, for a restaurant. So you would still need your separate license for that, that's not going to, that's not addressed in the old ordinance and isn't changed in the new ordinance.
That's not the way I understand it.
Could we enact an ordinance that stated if you want to have a winery per se in this district, you have to have a state domestic winery license? There's going to be nothing to prevent us from doing that, would there?
That's what the current ordinance says, yes.
It does say that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The, the current ordinance says that, well, the current wine ordinance actually says all wine offered for sale, offered for sale must be produced under a license, or, sorry, must be produced. Hold on.
Under a license duly issued by the state of Missouri.
Well, I'm sorry, I think, the, all right.
Does the state have a domestic winery domestic license?
Yes.
Don't say that.
Oh, yes, sorry. The current ordinance, as it stands on the books, says, all wine offered for sale at the winery must be produced under a state of Missouri domestics license.
Okay, and we deleted domestic because they have other types of licenses?
That's right. The other issue is that the current ordinance says all wine offered for sale, so under the current definition, a winery could not sell a bottle of wine that was not made in Missouri. And so the new proposed definition is making two changes. First, it's regulating wine production, and second, it's saying you have to have a license from the state of Missouri that allows you to do this.
Ask her, if she was the one that took it, I don't think, is there?
Let's put it back in, and if we, if Missouri state change, I'm not speaking for the whole crowd, but I'm suggesting to you that we put it back in, and if the state changes its requirements, then we can, we can change ours later. Problem solved? All right, thank you very much. Yes?
Hi, can we very quick, eleven speakers.
That'd be fine. Yeah, I'm just looking at the clock, we have eleven minutes before our next part of the meeting starts, so, thank you.
Hello, I am Becky Miller. I own Sugar Creek Winery in Defiance. I'm very happy to be in St. Charles County. I have developed, along with my family, what I think is a very successful business for twenty years. My question may seem kind of elementary, but if you're going to vote on this issue, there's a part I really don't understand, and maybe some other people, maybe you could explain it, or at least review it. It's on page, it starts on page two, the definition of a winery, and it continues on page three, and it says, "Any such establishment shall have five acres or more of wine grapes cultivated," which we've discussed on the premises. This is confusing to me. "And the quantity of wine sold to customers at the winery shall not exceed the greater of two times the quantity of wine produced, either in the preceding calendar year, or, on average, over the three preceding calendar years." Is that a restriction on how much we can sell? I, I don't understand that.
Holly, can you explain that?
Yes, it's a restriction on the amount.
It's got to be grown, there's a restriction on what's grown on premise, right? And don't you, he's trying to encourage you to make wine, isn't that what it's doing?
Sold to customers.
Yeah.
Not grown, sold to customers.
I can answer that. The intent of the original ordinance was that you had to make half the wine that you were selling, okay? And then somebody else within St. Charles County could make the other half if you needed some help. In no way did it intend to say that you couldn't make twenty times more wine the next year, thirty more times of wine the next year. All it's saying is that half the wine sold has to be made on the. It is confusing.
Right.
What's this?
It sounds like it's restricting what I, my growth.
How do you make it non-restrictive? How would you word it to take the words out to make it non?
Yeah, it, it is restrictive now.
It, it is not restricting what is grown, it is restricting what is sold.
Yes, that's what she's saying. Okay, so, let, let's just hypothetically, I sold a hundred barrels of wine to, to my customers last year. I don't, if, if I, if I was really good at my job and everybody likes my stuff, I should be able to sell three hundred barrels next year. So let's, does everybody agree with that?
Is there a reason why we wouldn't just eliminate that whole paragraph? Is there a reason?
I can try to help.
Go ahead.
The wording here really has to do with the fact that if you're a winery in an agricultural area, the property should be used primarily for agricultural production and processing of wine grapes and making into wine, rather than a bar. But it does allow some flexibility so that you could offer a variety of wines for sale. So if someone came to your winery and they, they said, I'd like to try something a little bit different, that wouldn't, that would allow you some allowances for that.
But all this does, though, in reality, Robert, is, it allows you to grow, but you've got to grow at a steady rate over time, rather than, than a spike.
Well, the last sentence is intended to address if you have a really bad year, let's just say, and your production goes down, it'll still allow you to adjust for that. It won't totally do away with your business in terms of.
The point is, is that saying, does that have anything to do with where I get the product that I sell? So that under this ordinance, I could then not make my own wine, but then just sell something else if I have a correct licensing.
If your property's owned agricultural, and you have a conditional use permit for a winery.
I thought it was protecting the wine.
Primarily, it's supposed to be wine that you're producing.
I have to follow the ordinance.
Yeah, but you could sell, you could sell some amount of wine that you don't produce yourself. But it had to be like a, a minor quantity, less than fifty percent.
Well, if that's what you want to say in your ordinance, which I disagree with, that isn't what it says. So I would suggest it be clarified when you discuss that.
Thank you very much, appreciate your point.
Thank you.
Next person? Mr. Hayeswood. And I do this out of friendship here, but we have six minutes on the clock.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, real quickly, first of all, there's a lot to agree with the comments that Dale Rollins shared, and you can see what's starting to happen. Robert indicated that this situation involving the fifty, the seventy-five percent rule, which is now being discussed as a new fifty percent rule, was meant to make sure that we kept a certain amount of agricultural activity focused in St. Charles County. And I'm not quarreling with anyone, and I'm not trying to demean, or diminish anybody, the, the quality or merit of what was said about the branding by, by any means, but now the argument over the seventy-five percent, fifty percent, has somehow segued into being a discussion of branding, not the preservation of agricultural activity within the county. I'd rather agree with the doctor. It seems to me that dealing with branding does not belong in a land use control context. It really needs to get itself into a different place. Maybe it's the licensing, or some other specialized winery.
A lot of zoning issue.
Yeah, but it really isn't a zoning issue. Now, if we're going to have one, fifty percent's better than seventy-five percent for the reasons that they mentioned. I, I would, I'm going to, real quickly, try to help Councilmember Brazel out, and I think Councilmember Cronin was, was worried about this. In your zoning ordinance as it exists, you come to a long section, Section 405.060, lots of definitions, setback, residence, commercial. One of the definitions in there happens to be winery. And as you deal with that definition, that's what's being presented to you for potential change. But winery as defined, however you land on the issue, leave it under its, with its present terminology, or amended as is being suggested in the, in Bill 408.7, I would hope everyone would, if you could, would turn to 405.080, which is the agricultural district. It is not a part of Bill 408.7. It is the current law that exists right now before the council does anything with Bill 408.7. And Holly was trying to make this point, as you look at Section 405.080, there are twenty-one permitted uses. If you have that agricultural zoning, you can do those twenty-one things. Now, when you want to do a winery in the agricultural district, and Tony was trying to make this point, you got to get a conditional use permit, of which there are thirty-two conditional use permits in the A district. And winery happens to be the thirty-second one. So if you amend the winery definition, you could, would now still have to come in to get a winery conditional use permit in the agricultural district, the same as you had to do for decades. Nothing changed. I think that's what Councilmember Brazel was trying to emphasize. And quite honestly, that's why you're not going to have a bunch of bars serving liquor by the drink, because you're not going to give a winery conditional use permit to someone who comes in and says, that's my business plan. Now, you then, the AT, back to just the three years that, that Councilmember Brazel was talking about, the AT agricultural tourism is trying to recognize the winery business so successfully established by the, by the early pioneers, has really expanded itself into being somewhat of a hospitality business, and that's why you have created this agricultural tourism. Now, when you get into that, once again, you've got these permitted uses, they're spelled out in Section 405.085, and there are, there are ten of those. Winery is not one of them. You still have to get a conditional use permit for a winery in the A district, the same as you have to get a conditional use permit in the agriculture. Last point, I've got another client here, which is more concerned with your architectural design requirements, because he's been trying for a long time to figure out how he can configure some improvements on his property. And we would ask you, if, if, if we can be a resource and answer any questions you might have about architectural design, we're glad to do it. Phil Schaal is here to answer those. I think I'm finished in six minutes or less.
You did, congratulations.
On, on that point, though, on the, on the, on the architectural values, from what I understand is, they had, it had to go through a variance committee, but I think that they, it goes to the council for the ultimate decision. So to answer your question, and tell me if I'm wrong, Holly, but if a, if a business owner is unsatisfied with the proposal of conditional use they're trying to get, they can come to the council and say, I don't agree with this, it creates a hardship for this reason. And so you have that opportunity for us to collectively make a decision like on any other situation.
And we're, we're pleased to have heard the distinguished council member from District One speak up for the person who's in that position.
Amen, let's go. All right, and it is six fifty-nine and a half. We've got thirty seconds to get back up front.
Is it okay if I amend a, a table bill off first?
Yeah.
All right, just so you guys know, what I'm going to offer tonight is at the beginning of the agenda, since table bills are at the end, I'll make an amendment to amend the agenda so we can pull it up, discuss it. We'll make some of the changes that we just talked about tonight through amendment, and go from there.
Thank you.